Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this workshop, the Borough of Gettysburg. Thank you all for being here tonight. I don't have any opening remarks beyond welcome and thank you for being here. I do have one announcement. An executive session of the Borough Council was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the January 8th, 2024, general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A and Section 708, 708A 5 of the Sunshine Act. No further announcements. It takes us to our first order of business this evening, which is our special presentation from our friends at the library system. Mr. Thrasher, welcome.
I'm Richard Thrasher. I represent the Adams County Library System. As I'm sure you are aware, the library is considering a move, and we are currently in or under agreement with the seminary to purchase a tract of land from them. That contract is subject to numerous contingencies, one of which is that we obtain proper zoning for the property, which we don't currently have. The property we're looking at is zoned institutional, and under the current zoning ordinance, library use is not a proper use, even by special exception. And I'm pretty confident we couldn't get it by variance either. So what we would like is for the Borough Council to consider a text amendment to the current zoning ordinance, which would allow for library use in the institutional district. Just by way of comment, part of the property we're buying is from Cumberland Township, which, and is also in their institutional district, but under their ordinance, library use is permitted. However, the, as we're, at least the plan that we have now, the building is going to be solely in the borough. And we kind of want to be in the borough if we can. But there are very limited options to do so, so we would like to be able to pursue this one at the seminary. We know that there's, the Borough is considering a revamped zoning ordinance now, and what we've understand, although obviously this is subject to change, is right now, the way the proposed new ordinance is written, we would be permitted at the site we want to build at. So what we're asking is that the Borough consider a text amendment. We were at the Planning Commission last week and presented this topic, and I think I can safely say the Planning Commission was very receptive to our request, partly because they would also like to see the library remain in the borough. We know that there's a proposed change to the amendment, I mean, to the zoning ordinance. However, we are under certain time constraints. We don't feel very confident just waiting for that new ordinance to be adopted, which is why we would like to present to you the possibility of a text amendment that would, although I know we're constrained by time, but the, but the text amendment, in our view, would be quicker than waiting for the new ordinance to go into effect. So under the contract that we have right now, we're supposed to close by May 5th, 2024. We know that even, even a text amendment might not meet that date, but we've been, our relationship with the seminary is pretty good. We think that if we could present to them, even if we couldn't meet that May deadline, then if we were to tell them, it's in progress, it's going forward, we're going to get there, that we could probably obtain an extension from them. So, like I say, the Planning Commission was quite receptive, and so, but they did say that they were uncomfortable dealing with it on their own. They wanted to hear from Borough Council first, or at least have it referred to them by Borough Council. So that's why we're here tonight.
Do you have target dates in mind to be breaking ground?
No, we're, we are buying, buying the land first, and then funding for the building is going to be later. So breaking ground is going to be a ways off. I mean, we would, if we get the land, we will probably start demolition of the buildings that are up there. But as far as starting the new building, we don't really have a date for that.
Okay. So as far as the zoning ordinance replacement project goes, we still have, I'm going to say it's five months left on the consultant process. Once the drafting of the new ordinance has been completed, we will then begin the process of deliberating it. We'll have hearings, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, several months after, after the consultant process.
That's what we understand, yes.
But I think realistically, we are looking at implementation probably by the end of the year.
Okay.
Maybe Harry can speak to this a little bit, but an amendment was not necessarily a quick process either. That would similarly take at least three months, probably at the minimum.
But that's a big difference for us, though, from three months from now to December of 2024.
Sure, and we would also incur cost as well to, in legal fees, so it, I, I'm not sure what we could do to assuage your concerns there without doing an amendment. Harry, do you have an opinion on what would be available avenue to us?
It seems fairly, fairly straightforward that the way to address this would be through a, essentially a text amendment as requested, so. I mean, obviously, the applicant or the library could ask for a zoning variance, but I agree with Mr. Thrasher's assessment. That would not be a, really a proper way to, for them to proceed, or it'd be a far more difficult way for them to proceed, with a probably relatively unlikely outcome that they would get that, because essentially, what they would have to prove is that the provisions of the ordinance essentially create an unnecessary hardship, and that the provisions of the ordinance are such that no other, no other use can be made of that property. Obviously, there's currently a use being made that's permitted under the, under the ordinance, so, I mean.
I would note that I think a text amendment would not do any serious violence to our, even our existing ordinance, because frankly, there is a library on the site right now.
Sure.
At the seminary, so.
Right, certainly, and we have educational libraries on other institutional sites within the borough as well.
Yeah, those would be appropriate accessory uses, which are permitted under the current provisions of the ordinance. But it's the standalone use as a library that really is at issue.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Thrasher?
I just want to say, I support the text amendment in the process. I think with the time constraints, with the ordinance, it's going to take several months. I think it's imperative that the library stays in the borough. As you said, there's a library up there already, as well as Gettysburg College Institutional. So I'm fully supportive of moving forward with the text amendment.
Harry, could you just, I think we know this, but could you just tell us exactly what the, in other words, if Borough Council decides to go forward, they can't act until their next official meeting, I guess.
That is correct. What they would have to do is initiate the Municipality's Planning Code zoning ordinance amendment process, which is under section 609 of the MPC. So they would, at that point, I would think that the critical action, if they chose or if they wished to proceed, would be to direct the preparation of the zoning text amendment and actually proceed with the scheduling of the required public hearing.
Would there be referral to Planning Commission?
That is also required under section 609, and also to county, the county office of planning and development. Those are two mandatory provisions, and you have to give them at least a minimum of 30 days advance notice, so that they can review and then make their recommendations to the Borough Council with reference to the pending ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Harry, can you mention why it didn't go through with the rec park? Because they were looking to have the library at the rec park, there was a deed issue. Can you just briefly summarize that for the public especially? Because this is, you originally wanted to go there.
Correct.
And couldn't.
Yep.
And now you're looking up near the seminary, which.
Right, which is probably the last available site in the borough. If we don't get this one, we're probably going to have to go somewhere else, so.
Yeah, I mean, the borough was constrained by, essentially, it was by law in terms of the ability to, it was essentially, it was property that was under a public trust, if you will, for recreation purposes. And although there could be argument with regards to, you know, what was a recreation purpose, essentially, the borough was currently and fully using that for its recreation park, which met that criteria. So it would have, would have been, or was problematic to the borough. The borough could not actually proceed ahead with a subdivision of that property without creating issues, and we had had state funding, et cetera, that had already been received. So it was a, it was, unfortunately, it was a, not a good proposition, or it was not a winning proposition for the borough to be able to do that.
Yeah, I will add to that as well. The research that the borough did on what it would take to try to break those deed restrictions, essentially, there's no way to break those deed restrictions, but if we were to find a judge that would allow it, we would then have to pay back every grant dollar the rec park has ever received with 10% interest compounded annually. We don't even have a full record of how many grant dollars the rec park has received. Just the limited grant record they were able to produce for us in a short amount of time indicated that we would have, if, if a judge were to allow the deed restrictions to be lifted, which is unlikely, we would have been on the hook for probably hundreds of millions of dollars.
And DCNR did actually raise that issue with, with the boroughs, specifically with regards to this, to that potential request, so.
Yeah, the enabling legislation that imposes those deed restrictions for recreational purposes is, is made to be indelible, and it is, so. So this is not the first time council has been approached by a single entity asking us to amend the zoning ordinance to allow a purchase, purchaser to use a parcel for something that is not currently legally allowed. That issue has been contentious. We have had lengthy deliberations over whether we would allow that sort of application or not. This one, I think, is very different in that the library is a community service. It is a service that is crucial to any thriving community, especially to the low-income portions of our community. It is in our best interest to facilitate keeping the library in the borough, some might argue. Does anybody else have something they would like to say about the subject?
I do, I have a question. As Harry just mentioned, the county planning office, and this is the Adams County Public Library. What contacts have you all had so far with the county officials?
I don't, go ahead Dorothy, if you know.
Randy Fial is a member of our board.
And as an aside, I was asked the other day, what was the original use of the present building? I was present when it became the library, but what was the original use of that glorious building?
There's a post office since, what, 1913, I think, or something like that?
1915 to 1980 something, '85 or '86 was the post office. And then it sat dormant for four or five years when the library was here, in this building, and they moved down the street when they purchased the post office building.
Any other questions for Mr. Thrasher?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Aside from the, the cost for the text amendment, what other legal fees roughly would be incurred by the borough for?
It would be, I mean, the preparation of the ordinance representation of the borough during the public hearing. I don't think it's anything that's extraordinary.
Advertising.
Advertising would probably be, but again.
Require a hearing, yes.
The public hearing is mandated under the Municipality's Planning Code.
So if, if they have to prove a hardship, what is the hardship that you're, that you have to prove?
Well, if they had to go the zoning hearing board route, that would be unnecessary hardship, which basically is a very high standard to have to meet. That's why I suspect that they're, I mean, that's why we know that they're requesting that they go through a legislative process, which is different than the zoning variance process. If you think about it, what you are, when someone goes to the zoning hearing board and requests a zoning variance, essentially, they're asking for the, that the, that the situation is such that, that they are asking the zoning hearing board to essentially make a, that a legislative finding, if you will, that that specific property is, is entitled to have that particular use. It's very, it's a very difficult thing to have. That is not what they're requesting, would not have to go through that. But, I mean, honestly, if they're making, or trying to make an argument that they, that that property can't be used but for the zoning tax change, that's an awfully hard, hard situation when you already have a property that's being used as part of the institutional, or as part of the seminary, consistent with your zoning ordinance. In other words, it really is council's job to legislate, and the zoning hearing board should only delve into those areas under very certain, limited circumstances.
Okay. All right, to summarize, for everybody's benefit and for Mr. Carr's benefit, the library is asking us to amend the existing zoning ordinance, even knowing that we are going to be replacing the entire ordinance, to, in the near term, allow for the use in the institutional zone for library space. This would facilitate them closing the purchase of a subdivided parcel, which is part of the seminary currently, by May of this year, and would assist them in keeping the library within the borough. So just looking around, any other further comments?
I would just say, I think when it was proposed to move the library to the rec park, we all were really excited about that. I mean, that was a really great prospect, and I think many of us were disappointed when we learned about the deed and how far back it goes, and that there was no way to, to get around that. And I, for one, would not want to see the library leave the borough. Is there any possibility that if the, if the zoning ordinance was changed, and then you were doing, you know, either surveying or looking at the facility, that there was a point in which it would not, you would not move forward with it? Would that, how would that affect, how would that affect the borough, any, any way at all, Mr. Eastman?
I wouldn't think so. I think that what you would do is you would, I mean, honestly, what you would be invoking would be a legislative process to, and to say that it would be appropriate under our zoning, that we would expand or extend our permitted uses to include a library use, which isn't really too far afield. I think, you know, I mean.
Especially since it's being used now.
I'm sure that it was limited to where it was, was in the old, in the Old Town District, because that's where the library was when the regulations had been put in place. I don't think even the future-looking folks on zoning didn't, I mean, didn't contemplate that. That being said, it was and is, as Mr. Thrasher points out, I mean, appropriate, absolutely appropriate use as an accessory use to, to the institutional uses. So that really wouldn't cause a lot of harm, I would think, to your zoning regulations. I think it was just probably something that just was never contemplated.
I could just add too, I think, I definitely support it, and to the library board. I, I think this actually begs the question too, in terms of Gettysburg as a, as a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly community, how important it is to look at and make sure that we continue with the Gettysburg inner loop, because it's going to force people who maybe don't have access to automobiles to walk to the library or ride a bicycle. That's a pretty nice hill, I've done that.
Yes.
Not much you can do to get around that, but I just think we need to continue to support the Gettysburg inner loop, and again, making the borough pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, because I think more people would be walking up there, which is not a bad thing. I think that's, that would be great.
It isn't a bad thing, but doesn't rabbit transit, isn't that on their?
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the route is, yeah.
For people who can't go or ride a bike.
It's interesting that you mention that, because when we were talking about whether or not the rec park would be an option or not, I was approached by multiple elderly folks who said that walking up the hill to the seminary would not be accessible to them. So there are two sides to that coin as well. You know, the, the base practice of zoning, especially creating an institutional zone, like the one we have, is to protect those properties from encroachment of either residential or commercial interests. But were the purchase not to move forward, I don't think we needed to worry about a competing library system swooping in and picking up the property, so I don't know that there would be a risk to the, to us in general. Any other comments or questions? Sir?
I just heard, if you're going to buy and tear down the building, how big a building are you looking for in a town?
I don't know what a square.
Twenty thousand square feet.
Twenty thousand square feet.
That building is my hotel. I can work out with you, and you don't have to go through all those hoops. It's 29,000 square foot right on York Street, have access of all the main highway, the bus stop is right there every day, and you don't have to go through that.
Which hotel is your hotel?
The residence is right across from the action gas station.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, so I guess the question before us would be, is there a consensus to vote next month to begin the revision process?
I would think so. Yep.
Bill?
This is the only parcel of land that's on the table?
For now, yeah, we, I mean, I don't, I mean, like I said, I don't, we don't know of any other sites that qualify.
The institutional zone covers the grounds owned by the seminary and some of the housing they own down Springs and Hay Streets. It would cover the campus of Gettysburg College, and it covers the school grounds here off of Thiever. Other than that, there are no other institutionally zoned properties within the borough. Would you be okay moving forward with that?
Yeah.
Mrs. Butterfield?
Okay, no, nothing more. Yes.
Okay, we'll add that to our agenda for February.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Thrasher. All right, so that takes us to our first public comment section of the evening. Our first public comment is restricted to items on the agenda for tonight. That is some H2O grants, code enforcement ticketing, the fee resolution as it relates to towing and parking, and that is it. Please use the podium, please limit yourself to five minutes, and we need your name and address of residence.
My name is Nancy Goodmanstead. I own and live at the Shriver House Museum at 309 Baltimore Street. I wish you all a Happy New Year, and I welcome you, council members. I've been up here before, and I'm talking about the bus parking here in town. I don't understand where the borough of Gettysburg has a parking problem. As I see it, there are three places in town that need bus parking. The Majestic has it covered beautifully, I've already talked to Matt about that. The Shriver House, we've been parking cars for, parking buses in front of the Shriver House for, it'll be 28 years this year, and I've never had an issue, I've never had complaints from a neighbor. We handle it beautifully. And I know now that there's an issue on York Street. And it seems to me, if you have an issue, you should address it. But to make a blanket program for the entire town, when the entire town does not have an issue, seems to me like to be a waste of time and money. You know, I was kind of looking through some of the ordinances, and it seems like when you have a problem, you address it. There's an ordinance that you can't ride bicycles on the streets, must have been a problem sometime or another, so they made an ordinance about that. We have one-way streets in town, there must have been issues on those streets, so they made a decision to make those one-way. I don't understand why the, the, so there are exceptions, of course. Why does the Arts Council get to put that little stage on the square that's used, I don't know, 12 hours a week maybe, and not even all the months out of the year, but yet we've lost all that revenue on the most, the most valued parking spaces in town, right up there on the square? So everything isn't treated exactly the same, and so I'm hoping that you could address my situation a little bit differently. The one thing I'm really asking for is that you come up with some sort of a conditional permit. For 28 years, the borough has allowed me to put the meter bag on when I know the bus is coming, and as soon as that bus leaves, I take it off. In the fall, under the parking permit, I had a bus at nine o'clock, 9:15 in the morning, so I had to pay for the meter from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 o'clock at night. My bus was gone by 10:15. So why should I pay the bus to have that all closed until 8:00 at night? I actually took the meter bag off, and somebody from the borough came, was all upset that somebody stole the meter bag. I said, no, I took the meter bag off because it wasn't being used for the next 10 hours, and it seems silly to have it closed off for that. You know, if you get a liquor license and you abuse it, they take away your liquor license. Well, I would like to get a permit to be able to park there, to save the borough from sending people down there to cover a meter bag, to take it off, and not, and also not to have to pay for it for 12 hours. And if I abuse that, I'll be the first one that you come down, and I'll give you everything that you want back again. But I've been following the rules for 28 years, and there isn't a problem in the whole borough of Gettysburg. There is a problem in one place, and it's a shame, but you need to address the problem, not make a blanket decision for the entire town when the entire town does not have a problem. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Any other public comment? And I would ask that you restrict yourself to items on the agenda. Please.
Hi, my name is Linda Attia. I'm representing the Upper Crust. Text amendment, well, we've been asking for you to add restaurants to the current reserved parking ordinance as written. That would be a text amendment to resolve the situation that Nancy just brought up. So we ask you again to add restaurants to the current ordinance as written to resolve the issue with the bus parking and loading and unloading of pedestrians at the Upper Crust. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And I will remind everybody in the room that bus parking is not on the agenda today. And I will remind everybody in the room that bus parking is not on the agenda today. Seeing none, that takes us to our current and old business. The first topic of discussion is our H-2O grant denials. Mr. Gable?
This is item eight on our list of tabled items at the end of the agenda. So moving forward with council's legislative priorities, items that will be dealt with during a public meeting will be highlighted with the number in parentheses, just so everyone can contract that. So this is item number eight on the list of tabled items. Member Lawson just mentioned a little bit ago about pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly borough. This item specifically deals with the Gettysburg inner loop phase B1, B2. If you remember, last year, council made a decision to make Racehorse Alley one-way west between Washington Street and Buford Avenue. What we're going to talk about here tonight is the challenges the borough continues to face with the construction money to fund these phases of the inner loop. So I'll just do a high-level introduction to this, the grants that we've applied for as municipality, the status of those grants, and then Engineer Clayball will talk about the project's scope. We're going to narrow this conversation down just to the Washington Street segment of this larger project. Clayball, Mr. Clayball will talk about our intention to use CDBG funds as part of this funding through the Washington Street corridor, and then where we are currently with our grants and the status of where we are with funding those. So just for, for a reminder visually here, this is, there we go, zoom out a little bit. This is the area we're talking about, Racehorse Alley going east to west, and then from south to north on Washington Street, crossing Railroad Street. This is the segment that we're talking about just on Washington Street, and Chad can talk about this a little bit more in detail when he begins his comments. Just a high-level view of what the borough has done over the many years that we've applied for grant funding since the year 2012. This actually, this is a graph that shows up in the manager's budget message. This is the revised version that will show up in the 2024 budget message. Just high-level view, since 2012, the borough has applied for about $42,500,000 in grant funding, and about 25% of that has been awarded, about $11 million has been awarded. And you can see in the early years, 2012 to, say, 2018, the borough was very successful at receiving grants. But for some reason, beginning in 2019 and to the current day, we do still receive grant funding, but generally not at the level that we have in the first five years or so of this graphic. So specifically in 2023, the borough applied for, specific to the inner loop, two H-2O grants, which was, money is made available for public infrastructure through the care, the rescue, the American, ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We have also applied for DEC grants and PennDOT grants. At the end of the day, all of those, with the exception of DCNR Green Trails Grant from 2022, have, have been rejected. So I just wanted to highlight the bad news there. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chad to talk about the budget for the construction of the, the segment of the inner loop and our funding partners, the money we do have secured and the money we don't have secured. And I have that up on the screen for you, Chad.
So, yes, and I'll, I'll give you a little bit on the budget here, and then I'll recap a couple of things with the scope, because the scope and the budget mirror each other. So what you can see here is the total cost of what we're at right now with this project is 1.35 million. The original scope, so let me just step back for, so we can, because again, the scope and the budget kind of mirror each other. Phase A has been completed. That's the, the Blue Bridge next to the Four Square Gospel Church, goes over to the post office, all of that part is done. There's a piece of side, brand new sidewalk on Buford Avenue. This is all of what we call Phase B. It includes all of Racehorse Alley, and then it includes about one block of North Washington Street between Racehorse Alley up to Constitution, where the college goes into the college. The entire project, all of Racehorse Alley and all of North Washington Street, was over $3 million. Because we have been failing at these grants, four of them now, like Charles said, the big one being the H-2O grant, that was a $900,000 grant, since we've been failing those, we've been starting to throttle back the, the scope. Now it's looking like we can only afford, at very best, the North Washington component of this project, and we're kind of putting the Racehorse Alley component of the project on the back burner. There's a reason why we're starting first with the North Washington Street component. That is because of utilities. So if you know any type of infrastructure project, the first thing you got to do is fix all of the utilities around the street. Then you make the street nice. You pave it, you put new sidewalks and everything. There's another project, and for, for some of the people that are newer on the council here, there is, in Chambersburg Street, there is a very old masonry arch chamber made out of rock in the 1800s that's failing. It took us decades to be able to find where it actually goes. We still don't know 100% where it goes, but we have a pretty good idea. To fix that, the thing is very deep. To fix that, we need a new pipe down Washington Street. That's really the only solution. We've studied it and studied it and studied it now for, for a very long time. The stormwater pipe, if we would replace that on North Washington Street, would be associated with this Gettysburg inner loop project. It's very expensive. You have to bore under the railroad track, a 30-inch diameter pipe. It's a very expensive component. The space where it needs to be, there happens to also be two water lines on that street. So we need to consolidate the water lines, move the one water line over. That's very expensive, because again, you had to bore a new water line under the railroad tracks. So the utilities alone are the line share of this 1.3 million dollars, and that's why that has to go first. You have to do the utilities first, then you can come through and start doing the sidewalks. So what you can see here in my breakout, the storm line, 325,000, the water line, 375,000. Again, that's the big chunks of, of money that go with, with funding this project. The carbon sidewalk, then, is, is some of the other line items that are, again, about half, or maybe less than half of this project. What you can see down here is some of the things, some of the items that we have for funds. We do have a C-2P-2 grant, that's a DCNR grant that Charles just mentioned, and we do have DCNR, CDBG money from DCED. That's the CDBG money that comes every year to the borough. We have often done curb ramp projects with that CDBG money. We did South Street most recently with that CDBG money, but it's now earmarked towards the Gettysburg inner loop, two years of that CDBG money. There's also some match funds from the borough and the Stormwater Authority that they've put towards this project. But you can see, and I'm not sure if you can see this number here, the very bottom right here, if you take our 1.3 million and you start subtracting what we have, we're still at a, at a budget balance of about $670,000. Again, if we would have got one of, one or any of these other grants, it would have been funded. We've been unsuccessful for several years now with, with getting to that. We're getting to, there's another part of this puzzle, which is the schedule. We're getting to the point in our project now where we are kind of between a rock and a hard place, where we have to do something in order to be able to meet some deadlines for the grants that we do have. Again, the CDBG and the C-2P-2. I know I'm using a ton of acronyms. If you want to stop me with acronyms, just let me know, otherwise I'll push forward. But the bottom line is, there's two grants, about $250,000 each, and the CDBG one has a deadline of spring of next year, of 2025. The C-2P-2, that's the DCNR one, has a deadline of the end of next year, the end of 2025. So we are coming to a point in time here where we're going to have to make a decision pretty soon, regardless of having this balance, if we're going to be able to move forward this project or not.
Can I interject there?
Sure.
Just to put the exclamation mark on that. If we don't use these funds, we lose the money. It has to be given back. So we are at crunch time where a decision needs to be made on how you want to move forward.
Go back, go ahead. And, and, and giving the money back for the CDBG, now, we're going to be talking to you, Charles and I, next, are going to be talking to you about another potential path with the CDBG money. But giving the money back, if we can't go this other path, is, is, is not good for, the county administers the CDBG money, and the county is, is on a naughty list right now because of other projects that went awry, not Gettysburg's fault, but by association, we, we got to follow DCNR's, I'm sorry, DCED's requirements with that money. And if we give it back, that's, that's not good for the borough or the county. So we really want to avoid that at, at all costs if we can. So again, that's where we stand with the budget. That's where the, the scope, again, is very largely around these, these utility lines. Then there's a piece of sidewalk that's going to get replaced at the end of it. So that's the scope and the budget. And I guess the next step, I'm not sure, Charles, if you want me to continue?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of questions. So before we get into options, why don't we? Get in through some discussion here.
Sure.
So I have a question, Chad, and that is, what you were saying, if we had to get the money back, it would, it would be awful to have to get back those funds. But it probably would hurt us in the long run, too, because they would not look kindly on future grants, awarding us future grants if we are giving back money. Correct on that?
Yeah, yeah. And to, to really put an emphasis on what Patty's saying there, there's, there is a, the CDBG money is, we're an entitlement community, Gettysburg, because of low income. We give $130,000 every year that we use towards curb ramps. And we don't have to apply for that, we don't have to compete for that, it just comes to the borough every year. If we would renege on this money, we would risk losing that, not just this year, but every year, for, I'm not sure how long.
And then a follow-up question. With the available funds, I see the Pella Grant that Happy got last month, which was great, that was a private grant that they, and then the borough and, and the Stormwater Authority. What about, like, GMA? Are they in this mix at all, or other utilities that, that we could tap into, or?
We, we started this conversation with Mark Geis, and he's going to talk to his board, but they've not committed anything to this just yet.
Okay. Because we're talking water, we're talking utilities, we're talking a lot of infrastructure. And this is the water that goes down, that could possibly, that goes down under a couple businesses on Chambersburg Street, too, right? Isn't this some of the infrastructure problems?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions on background before we move on?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the grant failures. What do you think is the reasoning behind? I mean, it could be different for each grant, I get it, but what would you say is the reasoning behind these grants failing or not meeting? I'm not sure if I'm wording that correctly.
No, you're wording it perfectly correctly. I just wanted to make sure I give a.
Not meeting certain criteria or a criterion.
I want to provide an equally measured response to the equally measured question.
Okay, yes. Just, just generally, it doesn't have to be like the, the details of, you know, what they've given you as far as response, but.
A lot of these grants are frankly political in nature. They're specifically awarded by the Commonwealth Financing Authority in Harrisburg, and it would help if we had lobbyists on the borough's behalf doing the bidding for us in Harrisburg and/or Washington. And being a small staff, we just don't have the time to make those trips all the time to do that lobbying work that often goes along with political awards.
I got you. Yeah, I understand. Thank you so much.
And, and I'll add that we've asked that question to them, and each grant source gives the, the same kind of prepackaged answer, which is, they have a lot of applicants, a lot of people that need money, and a limited amount of money to give. And that's basically what they tell us.
Yeah, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Good question, though.
Additionally, I imagine that because the borough is not a 5123, we are limited in, we are 501(c) what? Are we C7, C6?
I don't know that we're any of that.
Government.gov.
We're in.
Whatever one covers. There is one that covers.
There's a lot of grant money out there that are specifically for 51(c)(3) only, and we are not considered that because we're a government entity. And so we're missing out on some grants that we could be applying for, such as the Adams County Grant, but maybe we can look into partnering. Is GMA a 51(c)(3)? Do we know that? They have a board.
I have a question, though, my colleague. Mr. Carter, what do you, what, why are you saying that that's a big leap, that we're missing out on grants? I mean, do you know? Do you know that for sure?
I agree with you, but I think that there's government, the government entities are not 51(c)(3) status, like a charitable organization.
So, so a lot of these.
And there are grants out there that are only for 51(c)(3).
I, I would point out that 51(c)(3)'s aren't eligible for the grants we're applying for either.
Correct, and vice versa.
Yeah, yeah. These are by and large municipal grants.
Right. I'm just looking at, you know, I've, I've applied before, and I don't qualify for what they're looking for, but there's capacity building grants and program grants and collaboration grants with the Adams County Grant. You know, every little bit counts, regardless of if it's 25,000 or 150,000. But one of them is support significant collaborative projects that advance affordable housing, transportation, and economic development. I feel like that that could be looked into, not immediate money, obviously, but as we're looking at ideas for bringing in some grant money. But I agree, there are few and hard to come by right now. The pandemic has really hurt that.
You also have to match the mission of the grant that you're applying for with what the mission of the grant program is. So this is not a, a housing project, it's more of an infrastructure project.
Who writes the grants?
Combination of people, staff, the county helps us, and then Michael Baker International.
Okay, good, the grant writing is crap.
Yeah, it's not easy.
Yeah, it's not easy, and I applaud everybody for doing it. But I understand that, I think we talked about this before, and if this is going to apply, but they have grant writers, they write state campaigns, they grant for local
Writing the grants isn't our challenge.
It's the people who grant the grants. It's the committee that decides, yes.
I still will say.
The committee in Harrisburg that makes the decisions.
Right. Any other questions on background? So, this is just mentioning the other smaller partners we have. You can see there's well-span, Dustin's Gettysburg Hotel, Adams County Community Foundation, all have helped chip in, but you can see these, these values are just a drop in a bucket on a 1.3 million dollar project. Where'd my? Trying to find my options page. Was that the beginning? Yeah, there we go. Funding alternatives or options that we've identified so far. Staff's come up with three potential avenues for now. Not all have been confirmed that we can approach this way. Chad and I did meet with county planning office last week to discuss the CDBG deadlines. They offered to ask DCED to give us a determination if the borough could pivot and move away from our current commitment for the 2021 and 2022 funds on the inner loop and move to a standalone project of just using that money for curb ramps. Like I said, that we do not have a definitive answer on that option yet, but if DCED gives us the green light to do that, that would allow us to meet the deadlines, buy TCD, to use the money by the end of next year, and get projects done in the borough, and then buy us more time to apply for additional grants, find a way to lobby for them, and hopefully they come back successful in 2020, late 2024, 2025, and then fund the construction moving beyond that. If we cannot pivot away from our current commitment, as we, we have decided in, for the CDBG, there are two other options. The borough could investigate the concept of borrowing money. The borough could investigate the concept of borrowing money again. There's several organizations that specifically lend large amounts of money to municipalities at a very favorable interest rate. PIB loan, which is Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank, and then Penn Vest, which is another financial resource that the state offers municipalities for infrastructure projects, stormwater, wastewater, those types of things. Just know if that's the route that the council chooses, we would be borrowing about $650,000 because that's our current budget shortfall. It's not a small chunk of change. The borough currently already does have a PIB loan, if you remember when we did East Middle Street in 2015, to fund the the balance of that project, the borough borrowed a PIB loan for that. And it's part of our debt service with the general obligation bond in 2016. So this would be bringing on additional debt for for the borough to service. The other option is with the the council's policy decision to use the ARPA funds for the provision of government services. So essentially, some salaries for the borough staff are being funded through the the ARPA award, which is $3.1 million. The council's been doing that for the last two years. You have indicated that's your desire to continue that until the 3.1 million has been expended, which in turn is then because the tax rate has not changed, we are, that's how the borough maintains its large surpluses year over year. And the council has been taking votes to move those surpluses to our capital reserve fund. So currently in the capital reserve fund, we do have $650,000. And if you choose, you could just outright use that to fund the unfunded balance to this particular segment of the project. Chad, do you have any other options between besides those three?
That sums it up.
That sums it up.
I think maybe the only thing to add to what Charles summed it up pretty much with the options. If we, option A, the delay of if DCED does allow us to punt here, it buys us a year. Just doesn't make the problem go away. We still have the deadline of the C2P2, the DCNR grant, by the end of 2025. So we still need to make a decision. It just buys us more time to be able to chase a few more of these grants for one more round. Cover a couple of different avenues. We can reapply for GTRP. We can reapply and see if they can help us with. We don't know guarantee that we're going to get any of those grants. But a punt is really just that, just buying some time.
Did I understand that if we were to go with A, that it would affect the Gettysburg inner loop then? Or?
No, it just mean it would it it would mean that the inner loop would not be constructed next year or the year after.
Okay.
It just buys us time to use the CDBG money and not lose it.
Right.
And then gives us time to come up with another funding strategy for the construction.
And that section of the GIL was was that racehorse was going to be on Racehorse Alley or not necessarily?
At this point, we're, we've put the Racehorse Alley on the background. We're only looking at the North Washington Street component at this point.
Okay, so if we delayed that, I'm just trying to get a sense of the inner loop because I thought that's what you said, Racehorse Alley would be. But then the Gettysburg inner loop, the connector connection from coming down Railroad Street and over, that would be delayed to be going into.
That's Phase C. We haven't even really started talking about that.
So it doesn't really impact the, I mean, how much does it impact it?
It just kicks the can down the road for a year.
Okay.
Is is really what what essentially what it does. And 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 not to get into the weeds with it, but it's because the CDBG money we're dealing with, it's fiscal year 2021 money that has to be spent by 2025. So if we can, if they can punt at least on that year, that at least buys us a year from that. But again, we're still up against that window over the C2P2. So by the end of next year, we have to spend that money. So at the end of 2025, we still need to to move on to construction. So it's really, it doesn't, I don't think, affect the the Gettysburg inner loop, except for the time. Just pushes it back a year.
Okay. And the the PIB loan that we have, when does that get paid? I thought we paid off. We we had a.
Give me a second. I can, I can find that for you, too.
Thanks.
While he's looking at that, I just want to give a little further background to everybody here. You know, when we're talking about the inner loop project, we're talking about something that is largely modeled on the idea, concept of making a more pedestrian and bicycle friendly commuter and recreation route around the city, around the borough. And often we, we've had meetings here where we talk about, well, what are we going to do here cosmetically? This phase that we're talking about right now is really not necessarily about the bicycle and pedestrian use. What we're talking about having to fund here is some fairly, some really severe infrastructure problems we're having. We've done a really good job over 12 years of working on this project of partnering with GMA, of partnering with.
Columbia Gas.
Columbia Gas to try to really maximize doing as much work as we can as part of this project. You know, when we've got grant dollars that are willing to pave the road for us, well, then let's tear it up and redo the utilities, too, so we're doing it all at once. So the the utility work that needs to get done here is crucial, right? Just to, you know, really paint a picture of what Mr. Claybaugh is talking about on Chambersburg Street. It it's all stormwater runoff in that tunnel? Is that right?
Yes.
All right, so.
Currently, it might not have been like that in the 1800s, but it's currently just stormwater.
Yeah, it might have been sewage at one time, but currently it's stormwater.
It was a combined sewer, more than likely.
You know, over the last week with those torrential rains and now the snow, I am finding water just everywhere in my house. The basement flooded during the rainstorms. I found leaks that I've never knew I had before in the roof, cracks in the masonry around the chimneys. And I've got plaster effervescing. Like the last three weeks has all been all about water. Relatively small amount of water can do a massive amount of damage to infrastructure. And what we have here is, you know, picture it, if you will, a tunnel under the road and under existing buildings that somebody built out of rocks and then filled it with water. And it is collapsing. If we don't put that water somewhere, we are going to be creating massive problems for ourselves and those property owners. It it's it's sort of a ticking time bomb. So as we debate this, you know, whether we want to spend this money or how we're going to spend this money, whether we're going to kick a can down the road again, just remember that if we don't fund this, there could be repercussions for all of us. It may be cheaper to spend the money on the front end than clean up the aftermath if it fails. So I just want you to think about that as we discuss what we want to do here.
So in front of you, coincidentally, just this afternoon, I finished writing the debt service chapter, the budget message. So here's the, here's the graph that goes with that. You can see going back to 2018 with the amortization schedule from the 2016 bond issuance. At that time, you can see all the previous debt for the borough was wrapped into that, going back to the 20,000, 2009 PIB loan, which was for the Steinware Avenue Streetscape project. You can see each year we've crossed things off. It's been paying that down. 2009 PIB loan was retired in 2021. Currently, the 2015 PIB loan is set to be retired in 2026. But you can see we're almost done paying that. And then the only thing, and and last year, the borough paid off the 2010 bond issuance. So the the two things outlying are the lion shares of the 2016 general obligation bond and some minor amounts of money left over from the 2015 PIB loan. All that said, the debt service for the borough is about $640,000, give or take every year through 2029, when everything is scheduled to be retired. If you borrow money, you're going to be adding 650,000 to.
So doubling, basically, essentially, right? Close to doubling?
Well, you would have time to, we we would have to come up with a new amortization scale that goes beyond 2029.
Okay.
But it would increase your your debt load on an annual basis. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question. For Chad, would you characterize it as a ticking time bomb scenario, as Matt said? Because we're going to look to, you know, wait a year. What would you say as, you know, with your expertise about that?
I think Matt did a great job of painting the picture for you. I'll say it like this. Several times over the past couple of years, Chambersburg Street has started to falling it fall in. So whenever they do that, PennDOT comes out with trucks full of concrete and fills it up with concrete. So it's only a matter of time till it falls in to the point where the water can't flow anymore. The, it it's St. James Church, am I saying, is that the?
Christ Lutheran.
Christ Lutheran Church, Christ Lutheran Church on Chambersburg Street has like a vest of yule in the middle there that's real low in there. If this thing fails completely, that won't be able to drain. That will just fill up with water. There's a significant amount of water that comes to that location right there. So, yeah, it's 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 a pretty good characterization as a ticking time bomb with a stormwater component.
Yeah, that you you're probably familiar with that intersection, too, of Chambersburg and Washington. Every time it rains, that's a lake. It's a, it's a related issue, you know, we, how we're going to be moving that stormwater out of there. I think we've we've heard that sinkholes have been forming under that sidewalk and under Chambersburg Street there and that it's all related to this failing masonry.
And so Robbie made a good point, too, that that I think is important. We've been boiling this thing down to as bite sized pieces we can, and we can't get it boiled down any further. We boil it down to the point where the the pipe that we want to build takes us from Stevens Run Channel on on North Washington Street, under the railroad tracks up to the alley. We currently are stopping it there at the alley just because we don't have money to extend it. If we would have got the HTO grant, we would have taken it all the way up to the Lutheran Church and fixed this issue that we're talking about. This 1.3 million dollars that I had on the on the board a minute ago is just stopping the pipe at at the alley. So that doesn't even completely fix the problem. So I think that is a good point that that Robbie wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of. So just because we get this pipe to this point doesn't mean it's, the problem's fixed. We still have some more work to do.
Yeah.
One question. The partners that you listed up there, is there any possibility that CSX could be a partner for us? I I think I know the answer.
I'm not sure if I know the answer. I can guess at an answer.
We know the answer.
When you go under the railroad tracks, I mean, how responsible are they for?
I would, I would think that they would be, they would want this water to drain as well.
Yep.
But I can tell you when we had a similar project on Strighton Street not too long ago, this is, a lot of people in council were here for this. This is going back.
2018.
Six years ago. Not only would they not contribute towards it, but they made us pay a significant amount of money to go through that.
Because we had a, right.
Could be bored on the east.
Right.
Whenever you bore into the railroad tracks, it takes several days and it's a continuous bore. So that's all day, every day, 24 hours a day for three or four days. And they have inspectors there making sure that the railroad, we have to shoot these prisms on a railroad, make sure they don't sag and the whole nine yards. So I I would be surprised. It would be a, it would be a tough, you know, we're, you're reaching out to to places somewhere in Jacksonville, Florida, I believe, where they're they're managed. And it would be a challenge to 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 get funds there, I would say, if I had to guess.
I just had, I I kind of knew the answer, but I just had to ask it.
You know what type of interest rates we get or ballpark?
Well, we'll never get 2016 rates again. We we struck when money was free to borrow, that right after Brexit and other economic conditions in the country at the time. I I'd have to check, but it wouldn't be our standard right now. Everything's around five and a half. It would be somewhat less than that, but I don't know how much. Doing a little more research.
Would you be able to split it like half borrowing and half reserve funds or is it?
Absolutely. You could mix and match that way.
Does that help us at all?
I. Going along with council's directive on how to use the reserve money, it would help. The concept of that reserve money is to sit in a pot. Grants aren't free. You always have to come up with a local match. The borough has historically had trouble coming up with the local match. And when you're applying for a grant of millions of dollars, usually that match is going to be in the high six figures somewhere. For the first time, the borough is now in a position where we have local match available without extraordinary efforts to find that local match money. So if you fund this outright, you're diving into that pot of money that the council has meticulously been building over the last several years. If you did a half and half, that that does protect the overall policy objective that the council's been pursuing.
And what is the total capital reserve balance?
Please hold.
Okay.
I can find that, too. Let me do the last month's. It is over a million. I know that off the top of my head, but I don't know. It's probably about one and a half right now.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And is that, are those options A, B, and C in any particular order from staff recommendation?
No. As manager, my my least preferred one is borrowing a lot of money.
Yeah. Especially right now.
Yeah. I'd really like to not take on more debt for the borough.
So let's say we funded this, you know, in the next two months. When would we be looking to break ground on this project?
What's your timeline?
So so we would, the CDBG money has to be spent by May of 2025. That means we would have to pave in April of 2025. Means we had to have everything basically done by April. We're looking at a six to nine month construction timeframe. Now, you can do utility work and concrete work through the winter months. So that is possible. It's not preferred. You have to blanket the concrete. There's extra work. It takes extra time. So you're basically looking around six to nine months before April is the very latest that we could start. So by the end of the summer, essentially, if you do that math, it's the end of the summer, we would have to start by the end of the summer.
Is that feasible?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we are pretty good, pretty good ways along with our design and our permitting. Yeah. It's just basically, we're kind of, we've been adjusting some designs here and there. One thing that we did get favorable response from the county with the CDBG, it it also included the lighting on the alley. They did tell us Thursday last week that we can eliminate that lighting, at least for now, and 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 hold that until a future phase of the project. So that saved us about $100,000.
Racehorse. Okay.
On 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 the on the alley. There's the, the, the original Phase B project, again with the alley and then also North Washington Street, the alley had lighting proposed on it. North Washington Street does not have lighting on it because the college's properties all are lit pretty well. So by eliminating that, that saved us $100,000. So again, we're still trying to tweak the the scope a little bit, but we're pretty good. We have our CSX permits in hand. We're pretty, pretty much ready to go for construction. But again, I think it's, we we could probably be ready to go in three months from now at the soonest. The very latest that we have to go is the end of the summer if we want, if we have to meet that CDBG deadline. And and just to be clear, one thing, you know, for for op, option A here, if this is what the the council says that they prefer, we still need to wait for DCED to give us the green light to kick the can. We aren't sure that they're going to say yes to this. DCED could come back and Dina from the county is currently looking into this for us. She could come back to us and say, I talked to the grant manager there and they can't budge. You have to do it now. So in that case, then you're going to B or C anyways. So it's just to see if if they said yes, would that be your preferred option to to wait to punt for a year?
And when are we expecting their decision or their input?
Did she say, Charles? She was gonna, she was gonna jump on it right away to see if she can get us an answer. But I don't know that she gave us a deadline for how quickly she'd be able to get an answer.
We'll know more by next month, next month, of course. But I would say we 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 would probably need a decision by the by the end of the first quarter on where you'd like to go.
And not to pour salt in an open wound here, but so so option B that Charles presented was options that include GMA and G and Stormwater Authority, two authorities here. And there's an option for them as well to to take a loan. But they also failed on a lot of significant grants lately. We know that the Culp's Run Stream Restoration Project, $500,000, applied for three years in a row and didn't get any money for it. We know that the Culp's Run Stream Restoration Project, $500,000, applied for three years in a row and didn't get any money for it. They, they did get some county money, but they didn't get the big, the $500,000 grant that they were hoping for. Also, they have a wall that's falling in, it's associated with the Gettysburg Municipal Authorities Interceptor Project. That was an H2O fund, didn't get the money for it. That was the other one that Charles mentioned earlier. So they're kind of in a point where they don't have the money to, to put towards these projects either. It's either going to be taking a loan for them or punting.
That, that underscores Ms. Sanders' question too. Adams County in general did very poorly in these grant awards. Probably one of the lowest in the state when you look at what was awarded and to whom. So we, we have work to do in Harrisburg as, not just the borough, but as a county.
Okay.
I just, I just add, I, I really don't want to leave money on the table. I think we, probably many of us can agree to that, so I think I like.
B or C or a combination of.
Exactly, I think that's, leaving money on the table is, that's lost then to us, you know? And we need all we can get, so.
What does C2P2 stand for again?
Patty.
It's C3PO's brother.
Yeah, it's a.
I'm gonna say you are wrong.
Conservation, da, 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 preservation, da, da, da. There's two Cs and two Ps in the acronym, but C2P2. We can get that answer for you.
All right, anything else on this topic?
Community Conservation Partnership Program.
There you go.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so no, everybody, we will be having to wrestle with this question in the coming weeks. And we will need to make a decision as to what level of expense or debt or a combination of the two. Excellent idea, Mr. Bale, that we will, uh, we would be comfortable with. Are we okay to move on?
If you are.
All right, so that takes us to code enforcement ticketing.
Yeah, so this, this topic came up actually first in 2020. This is as by the PBS number 2020 dash zero eight. We currently have pivoted away as a municipality from outsourcing all of our code enforcement operations to a third party UCC contractor, PMCA, Pennsylvania Municipal Code Alliance. We have now brought, by and large, most of our code enforcement work in-house. Thus, Peter Grifion is now a member of our full-time staff. He's our code compliance officer. The money that the borough no longer sends to PMCA to do code work on our behalf is now staying in-house as Mr. Grifion does all of our regulated rentals and other code activities. So the money that we were spending on code enforcement for the PMCA is now being spent in-house for a full-time staff person. This move has helped the borough's posture, but by and large, the borough still is fairly reactionary when it comes to code compliance. Just because we are a very densely populated municipality and are very active for a community of our size. Code enforcement ticketing concept, other municipalities throughout the Commonwealth are already using this system. And we strongly believe this would help the borough become less reactionary and more proactive with code enforcement. With that very general introduction, I'm going to turn it over to our planning director, Mr. Whitmore, and Pete Grifion to get into the details of what we're looking at.
Actually, Pete, if you'd like to do the handout or we just, either way, I can hand them out if you'd like. And I was asked to briefly go over kind of the process as it is now. And I'll be very specific to ICE and GRASS because I think that's where ticketing applies most. Some other entities, it may be able to be added on, and I think kind of walking tours have a possibility of a route for this also. But right now, if I were to get, do enforcement for slippery snow and ice sidewalks, I would patrol the borough, find out where that may be, take a picture of it, come back to the office, generate a letter or a notice of violation and go to the property owner on file. They can respond to it within a given amount of time that I provide, which is usually seven days. That's kind of like the standard, which always doesn't help ICE. And that is within them being mailed these through a certified mailer and a first-class letter. I, I do both to cover both bases. So all of this builds up to whether they fix the problem or not in that timeframe or whether they've even gotten a notice in a, in a, in a timeframe that's appropriate for the violation. When we went away from kind of that system through sending letters to the property owner and I was provided the warning device, it's the same unit, the mobile device that the parking enforcement uses. And this allowed me to put notices and warnings right on the property owner's door, which a lot of the times was helpful because tenants would then be receiving the notice. And a lot of my violations, the tenants could take care of. So it saved the borough a lot of time and money and certified letters in the effort to, in the end, bring these violations to citation where this could done in, in an afternoon of the tenant finding out that they have long grass or, or there's an ordinance that they hadn't known about in the past. The complication with ICE, and I think we can focus on that for the ticket ordinance as a specific example. If I were to get a, someone who has in violation ICE next to their property, I write the citation, then they have to be scheduled 30 days in the court. They have to plan on coming to that hearing. And then if they come to the hearing and we both go and get the magistrate's decision, you need to wait another 30 days for the appeal process. So a ticketing ordinance moving towards what I think may be a good solution avoids all that for myself, the staff, and the, the citizen not having to go to a hearing. And a lot of the times, if they're at fault and they can just pay the $25 fine, I think that's the best solution. And $25 is just an example of a, of a place to start when you, when you think about ticketing. Right now, if the ticketing ordinance, some of the things, as you guys discussed it and decide which direction you want to go, some things I wanted to remind you of, that snow and ice for the sidewalks is a ordinance that goes to the one holding the property. So I was, I would be able to hold a violation towards not only the property owner, but it is, there's possibility that a tenant could also receive a violation. That's one of the ordinance, the only ordinances that does specify that the tenant would be responsible for some of those violations. All the other, the grass as an example, the owner is ultimately responsible for cutting the grass. The, the ticketing process outline I provided that, that it's in the folder in the file, but we could also pass it along. That would be an example, and I wanted to present that. So part of this process would be a lot of education. And I think that starts the process and ends the process along with kind of some of those formal court processes or whatever, whatever ends up being the end, end resolve. But, but those notices also have some ideas I thought that would be good for the community, some reminders on there that if you live next to someone with mobility issues or there's, there's chances there that neighbors could help each other in this process. And that would probably go into some of the, the notices that we talked about and be able to work with, with some of those in need in those sort of scenarios. So that's why I presented this one, because it gives avenues of education and assistance from community members if, if that is accessible. Finally, I wanted to remind you of, as you decide this, that the citation is never off the table. That's still the end game. The ticket would avoid the citation in a lot of scenarios, but those in violation who wish to ignore the ticketing would still end up having to go through that citation. And Harry, I would ask you to just make sure I'm saying this correctly. They would still have to go through a, a, a process with the magistrate involved and having to go to the court for a citation. There's a ticket that we can take care of and be paid directly to the borough and allocated where we have seen fit. The other process would be that the court and the magistrate decides ultimately the fine that they want to impose and also whether there is a violation or not. Normally, if the code enforcement goes and meets with the magistrate, he's mostly or she's mostly deciding on the violate, the fine. And, and I'm offering you guys any questions you had specifically about any of the things that I talked about and unless you had anything else to add, John.
I mean, overall, the goal here is compliance. This is a tool to enable compliance on a much quicker timeline than the citation route. And hopefully provides, while this may seem odd, for people that are violating the ordinance, it's a little bit easier to work with a $25 ticket as opposed to a formal citation and having to go to court. Yeah, so that, that's all I'd add.
Okay. Well, thank you both. Council discussion. Uh, I guess the question would be, is anybody here opposed to the concept of moving forward with this ordinance to allow enforcement and ticketing for ordinance violation? Now, just open up the floor here. Not seeing a lot of discussion, so I guess everybody's okay with this concept. Harry, could you please let us know what this would look like moving forward? What the timetable would be, what the ordinance would be? How long do you think it would take you to put together an enabling ordinance?
I think it wouldn't be terribly long. I think we are already dealing with some forms that, I think it's Norristown and I believe there was another municipality. I would think that we would be able to do the process or complete the process within three months at the most.
It, it seems like this ordinance would be largely mechanical, like there's not a lot to discuss in terms of execution, right? I mean, does the department have the ability to write these citations? Yes, here's how it would work.
Right, right. I did note that there was the ordinances that have been provided, there's an appeal process. And I guess we'd have to decide how that would be handled. I think that would be something pretty critical.
Wouldn't that be the Code Enforcement Appeals Board?
Could be, we could use that. I mean, that's a possibility.
Finally get them active.
They might not like that, they might enjoy it, I don't know. Could be, it could be them. It was, it was interesting because it did seem like it was pointing toward that you would choose an administrative official to, to handle that, but I don't know. Other than, of course, somebody who's involved in the ticketing process. But code enforcement, now the Code Enforcement Appeals Board is going to have, you know, we, we already have due process parameters already in place for them. Now, I don't know whether that would be too, too long of a process. We, we do want to take a look at that. I think that's an important component of this, is how we, how we handle appeals to the tickets.
Okay. So not seeing any opposition, it looks like we would be voting on that in February on whether to move forward?
Yeah, is that correct? We could, we could do that.
Great.
Go forward with the creation.
Creation, yeah, authorizing solicitor draft ordinance and.
Advertising.
Well, we, I don't know that we're ready to advertise yet. Yeah, we want to visit this at another work session.
February is forward with it.
Yeah, we want to get a, get a product in front of you.
Yeah, a long way ahead of it.
There might be, again, questions on how we handle it. Like I said, particularly I'm, I'm interested was the appeal process.
All right. Uh, any other comment on this subject?
I just want to say I appreciate that you're being proactive in educating the public about these two things. I mean, you can live in the community for a long, long time and not know that you need to remove your snow from the sidewalks. So I do appreciate that. Or that your grass is high or what happens if you're on vacation.
Those people know they do this, where the responsibility falls is usually the question.
Right, sometimes they don't know, especially new tenants, young tenants, people who are new to the community. And it's, it's important to constantly keep that sort of open line of communication to, to our residents. So thank you for that.
And I'll just close with one, one last thought on this. You know, moving this code enforcement in-house enabled us to do several things. First of all, it actually created a cost savings for us, which is exceptional. But also it empowered us to really direct code enforcement to concentrate on the things that are priorities to us. When we were using an outside contractor, they did not have a lot of interest in, for example, enforcing the ordinance that controls how walking tours and ghost tours work after 5:00 PM. Well, all the ghost tours happen after 5:00 PM, so if you had an operator who was not respectful of the ordinance, it was the wild west out there and there was nothing to be done. So Mr. Grifion has made his presence known, and so it allows us to set those priorities. But also, when the outside vendor was doing it, they weren't always up to speed on what other departments in the borough was doing. So remember, there was a time in 2021 where PMCA went around and started writing warnings to everybody who had a brush pile in their backyard because they didn't know that the following week, Mr. Harbaugh would be coming around for brush pickup. So having this in-house creates a streamlined, more efficient, more affordable process for us and the taxpayers. And I think I would rather receive a, receive a $25 ticket than a trip to the magistrate, so, yeah. All right, I think that takes us to new business, the 2020, the 2024 Fee Resolution Amendments. Chief Glenny.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
As Matt and Judy are aware, but the, the rest of you, I, because we talked about it in one of our, our monthly meetings, I was approached by one of the local tow agencies that tow for us in the borough, asking if we were going to consider raising the, the allowable fees that they could charge because they were barely breaking even, if breaking even, and the fees hadn't been changed in a significant amount of time. So I looked into it and I actually, there's, there's three tow companies that tow in the borough. I talked to each of them. Two of them, one of them kind of indicated they weren't really trying to tow anymore in the borough because they just couldn't charge. It was, it was too low. Another one said, we're not going to renew our license to tow in the borough because the fees are too low. And the third one just was thankful that we were contacting and looking into it. I know in my tenure, and I've come to find out, apparently I've been remiss in not even addressing this with council because in the ordinance it says the chief of police will address this. And I was not aware of that until I just started looking this up. So I know if it's, if it's up to the chief of police to address it, it hasn't been done in five years because it'll be five years in March since I've been here. I looked at, and as I said, I contacted all the, the three tow companies that towed for us. I looked around other places, looking for ordinances and what they were setting their fees at. I come to find that, that a lot of communities don't set these things. They have no, no ordinance in place where they set a resolution to say how much tow companies can charge. Generally, the ones that have them in place are much larger areas. And some of these things for their fee schedule are so complex that they go down and yell and they break it down to charge for, you know, every little bit of equipment they use and oil dry and all those things that, that you come across. Our ordinance doesn't allow for that. And the way I look at it, our ordinance allows for us to charge for three things, one of which we have not set a fee for. And so the Borough Code in Chapter 15, Part 6, which is towing, it, it calls for the maximum fee for towing and storage services to be set by resolution of council from time to time. So there's two types of towing that are addressed in the fee schedule. Currently, the towing and removal of an immobilized or disabled motor vehicle or a motor vehicle parked in violation of any provision of the ordinance of the borough as authorized or requested by the borough, consistent with the provisions of the ordinance. That fee right now, so what I would. That fee right now, so what I would classify that as a non-crash tow. In other words, the vehicle needs towed for some reason other than it was involved in a crash. That fee is right now set at $125 maximum amount. And then the towing fee for the crash removal thing, which includes a cleanup and things like that, is $175 for a first hour, $125 for each additional hour. And then the third part of that is storage, and we set a, a storage maximum for $75 per day. In looking at it, I think, I think, and it might as well just get the storage off the table now, of course, it's up to you all, but I think $75 a day is a reasonable maximum storage fee. A lot of other areas that have these things are charging that, some a little more, some a little less, so we're kind of right in the middle there. Now, as far as the one fee that we do not cover, but the ordinance says we're supposed to, that's a drop fee. Most of the places I see that, and a drop fee means simply that the tow truck is called, they come out, in the time it takes them to get there, the owner of the vehicle has then been located, comes out, says, "I don't want my vehicle towed," but the tow truck has come and put in some effort, so they've actually made it to the scene. And the ordinance does allow us to set a fee for a drop. I would suggest, after looking over everything and talking to some of the places that do have this, that we would set a drop fee at $100. That way, there's, there's no towing. And I should say that, that in, when I talk to the people that tow for us, they were, when they tow outside the borough, they charge significantly more than the borough allows. One of them up to $450, which I, like, "Well, I'm not going to get you there," is basically my, my conversation with them. So, I'm just going to throw this out. These are in the middle, and it's, it's kind of hard to pull some of this stuff out. But I would suggest we really, we, we set our non-related crash towing, which is currently set at $125, at $225 maximum. I would suggest that we set our crash-related towing and cleanup, because you've got to remember, that includes a cleanup, so they've got to pick up, you know, sometimes it might be an inner fender, other times it might be, you know, significant portions of the vehicle that are scattered across a block area. I would suggest that we set that fee at $325, and then for additional hours, we let that alone at, at $125 for each additional hour. Again, I wouldn't say we change the, the current storage fee, and I would also suggest that we set a drop fee as the ordinance tells that we're, or at least to me, looks like we're supposed to, and we don't have that in there. That's in the middle of what I'm finding different places that actually do this. Some of the ordinances I pulled out, I brought one, you know, unfortunately, a place, you can find it, was like Philly, Pittsburgh, things like that, of course, they have ordinances. I did pull out another central Pennsylvania municipality that has a lot of visitors. I hesitate to say State College, since I bring up a lot of things from Center County, since that's kind of where my roots are. Theirs is very complex. They allow the, the tow operators to charge for, you know, using a dollys and dropping a drive shaft, and, and any type of tow equipment they use. If they have to bend this, bend that, there's a, there's a fee for that specified in their ordinance. And I don't think we can go to that extent because of the way our ordinance is written. I do like the simplicity of our ordinance, and again, I, I think that, I checked with the tow companies, they were okay with the, the rates that I'm talking about. They're somewhere in the middle of what I found people are, or places are charging. So, again, I would suggest a non-crash related tow, or the first part to be at $225, the, the crash-related towing at, at 325, and the drop fee of 100, and then just retain the current storage fee. I think $75 a day is reasonable, based on what I've found in other places.
I just want to clarify for everyone here that, whereas our previous conversation was about monies that could be collected by the borough, what we're talking about here is not penalties or fines to the borough. This is talking about how much the towing vendors would be able to charge the people who own the vehicle and are affected.
And those are maximum amounts as well. I think, I think I said that, which is the case, I did. That's, that's a maximum.
I bet they often choose to charge less, though, right?
Sure.
Sure. All right. And then we also have, oh, please, sorry.
Yeah, so, I'm just curious, chief, what, a non-crash towing, what is that for mostly?
So, it's for a lot of private parking toes, parking violation toes, disabled vehicle toes, so.
Snow emergencies.
Snow emergencies. Snow emergency toes. They're, and the reason they're less is they're simpler for the tow, the tow company. There's not a lot of manipulation of crashed parts of the vehicle, and there's no cleanup to them.
When you're involved in a crash, if you've got, you know, normal type car insurance, would your car insurance pay for that tow, that cleanup?
Generally, yes.
They would. So, the non-crash that you just mentioned, the different towing, I, I guess I, I've never had a car towed, thank goodness, you know? But then when we see boots on cars, is that usually they're being, going to be towed in when there's a boot on a car?
Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. Sometimes people will pay the fee to have the boot removed, they'll, they'll go about their, you know, their day. Other times, they don't, and the, the parking authority or whomever booted the vehicle will end up having to tow it out, and then that's on top of any other fees that they would pay.
And where do they, where, these three tow companies that we use, are they all within the borough, or?
No, they are not.
How many miles away are they?
So, they're required to have a yard within so many miles of the borough, and I can't, I don't have that ordinance for me to tell you, but the only one that's physically located in the borough that tows for the borough, and their yard's not in the borough, it's just outside the borough, is, what's that?
Is that Excalibur?
No, they're not in the borough.
Oh, okay.
They're outside of the borough, is RNS down on, on York Street. And then RNS, Excalibur, and then J&amp;A Towing, which is down towards New Oxford, are the three companies that tow regular vehicles for us, or get licenses. I mean, they're, anybody, anyone of the, could get a license as long as they fall within the criteria. And what our ordinance doesn't address either is heavy vehicles. So, if we have, for example, we had a tractor trailer decided they wanted to straighten out to square not too long ago, and got hung up in the middle. That heavy tow is significantly more expensive, and the borough has never been in, for lack of a better term, the business of saying how much those heavy toes can cost, because there's just so many, so many variables there that, that when they're towing those big heavy-duty vehicles. And as one of the tow operators pointed out to me, even your normal-sized tow truck with a rollback is costing them close to, if not six figures now, by the time they're all outfitted. So, you know, these, these folks have some capital outlay to tow. But I, you know, the, the short of it is, I think we need to address these. We haven't raised them, and they're checked on them in the five years I've been here. So.
So, I, I, I'm lucky that I have AAA, right? So, if I have to get a tow because I have a broken-down car, I'm lucky because it's covered by that.
Yes.
A lot of people's car insurance. I, I just, I don't know, it makes my hair stand up when I think about this, because usually, the people that are getting towed that are a non-crash, oftentimes are people who might not have the means to pay for this, and it just seems to add more burden to the people who are getting towed, for whatever reason. And so, I just, I just, you know, going from 125 to 225 seems like, that's a big, that's a big jump in my mind, so, I just put that out there.
I will say, I understand that, but I will also say that's significantly less than a lot of other places are, are charging right now.
But we're not Philly, and we're not State College, so, you know, I just, anyway.
If, if the. If the rates are not increased, will we have a tow company available to us?
That's my worry, that we will not. I believe that it becomes a significant public safety issue because we've got a crash vehicle in the middle of our street that we can't get moved, or, 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 or snow parking vehicles that we can't get out of the way for public works to plow.
I just don't like to, the increase of, from 125 to 225 is just, that's a, that's a big jump, regardless of whether we looked at it in five years or not. And maybe we need to look at it more often, I don't know, but, anyway, just my two cents.
I have a question about the drop fee. So, could you say that our, I didn't get a chance to look at the ordinance, that our ordinance says that we must have a line that includes a drop fee, or we may have a line?
So, if, if you look at Part 15, it says, "No vehicle shall remove under this part, or the authority of this part, if the time of the intended removal, the owner or custodian of the vehicle is present, express a willingness and intention to remove the vehicle immediately. In these instances, the towing company shall charge no more than an authorized fee for responding to the scene and the limited service provided. The towing company shall make reasonable accommodations to pay it." So, by my mind, and Harry can, Harry can speak more to the legislative interpretation here, or the legislative intent, but I believe the intent there is that we should set a fee for that drop. And, or otherwise, you know, you know, a tow company's going to come in and say, "Well, I'm here, you're going to pay me the, the fee."
So, by not setting a drop, we are opening up the vehicle owner to being charged the full fee, but if we set the drop, we might actually save them some money.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions there? Okay.
Do we, do we like the proposed numbers, aside from Ms. Lawson?
Is there any other opposition to the chief's proposed numbers?
I, I do take issue as well with the 225. I mean, it just seems a little excessive when I think about if a vehicle's parked in violation of the provision, and they've violated, clearly violated an ordinance, a parking ordinance, I understand, but I really, I feel like I can discriminate between an immobilized vehicle or a disabled motor vehicle versus someone who's parked intentionally where they're not supposed to be. So, I'm not trying to pick hairs or split hairs and, like, make this nuanced, but I really feel like it's sort of excessive, in my opinion.
Is there a number you would be more comfortable with there?
Well, the original number was 125. I mean, I, I would want to know for what reason 225 was picked, is that it seems arbitrary? I don't know, it's just me.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, and, kind of was, but it's, it's, it's less than some are paying, it's, it's more than some are paying, it, it was kind of in the middle. And when I talked to the tow companies, they, they were, of course, they're going to want, want to get what they can, but, you know, they, they all indicated a little higher than that, but I'm like, "Well, I think that's reasonable." So, I honestly just subtracted like 25 bucks from the lowest price, when the tow company said to me, and said, "That's probably good for..." And there was, like I said, it, it, it's in the middle. And, you know, a lot of these ordinances and fee resolutions were, were so complex and broke down to where, "Do you have to use a dolly here, or you have to use this here?" That, that's all spread out, so we, we don't have that. So, I just kind of tried to make a, what I felt was a reasonable alternative. I'm not married to that figure. I mean, you can make it 200.
Maybe 175.
And, you know, those tow, those cars aren't going to be the vehicles that are causing what I would term a traffic safety or public safety issue most of the time. So, I, what I'm kind of saying is, you may not be able to get to anybody to tow them, is, is the short of it.
Do we know what some of the other municipalities charge?
A lot of them don't have a fee specified for any of this. Most, most municipalities our size don't specify anything. They don't have any regulations controlling this.
And in that case, the tow vendors would set their own prices.
The tow vendors would set their own. And, you know, state law, and some of the, some of the guidance out there, if you, if you just simply Google it, there's some agencies, you know, "What are my rights if my vehicle's towed?" And, you know, you'll see a lot of language that says reasonable fees. There's nowhere you really find a dollar amount. I, and frankly, I am most concerned that we get people out to tow our crash vehicles because they're the ones that are obstructing traffic, and some of the disabled vehicles for that matter, which is, you know, one reason. I just, I, I don't want to make it unattractive for people to come, and I know where we're at now, it's, for lack of a better term, unattractive for these companies to come in and do it.
So, I just did what you advised, and just Googled it. This website, which I've never seen before, which is called The Zebra, says the national average is $109 under five miles. Can be up to $275 for up to 40 miles. Well, I don't have a strong opinion. Let's just take them one by one here. Is there a consensus on the non-accident, non-crash towing, which currently he is asking for a maximum of 225? I've heard 175 is a compromise amount. Does anybody feel strongly about 175 for that?
I think 175 is reasonable. That works.
Is this the same if it were at somebody's private property? Or is this just a disabled vehicle, immobilized vehicle on a snow emergency snow route?
No, this is going to be a private property tow as well.
It's going to be the same amount for private property?
Which is a maximum. Yep.
They can't be two separate things. Because, you know, making a mistake parking in a snow emergency is one thing, parking intentionally in somebody's private parking lot is another.
Well, I think this would also cover, like, you get to your car, and it doesn't start, and the tow truck comes and they can't jump it, so they're going to tow you.
So, parking at a street meter, and, "Oh, my car isn't starting," that's one thing. Parking in somebody's private parking lot is another. That's my argument.
I mean, am I understanding that correctly with a disabled vehicle, chief?
Yes, it's, there, there's your language, Charles, is a, "The towing removal of immobilized or disabled motor vehicle or a motor vehicle parked in violation of any provision of any ordinance of the borough as authorized and requested by the borough, consistent with the provisions of the ordinance." So, that is, that is your private parking toes, that is your parking violation toes, that's your booted vehicle toes. I would say that's your disabled motor vehicle toes. That's any, basically anything that's not involved in a crash.
Is everybody okay with 175 for that?
I would say 175 or 200. I mean, I understand you want to get people in here to remove these vehicles.
Sure.
So, I don't want us to be cut out of that.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, you know, rinse someone who's just had some bad luck either, so.
Has any, any of the towing companies said they would never come out, they would not come out? I mean, have any of them, have you made the call, and then they said, "No, we're not coming out," or?
Not as of yet, but right now, I did have one when I talked to them, said, "We weren't, we're not going to renew our license."
Okay.
Their annual license?
Yes.
Which is 250?
Yes. They have to pay 250 for their annual license.
175? Anybody? Please speak so we can move on.
Yes.
Okay, 175. The crash rate of 325, and then 125 for additional time spent cleaning up the site. Might, yeah, if I understand that chief correctly, this is a situation where the drivers are required to do more than just tow the vehicle, they are required to take care of fluids that have spilled, environmental cleanup, and then making the site safe, including glass and shards of metal, that sort of thing. And this is a situation where one's insurance would contribute, so I think that that's a reasonable rate. Is there any disagreement there?
I agree. I think it's reasonable.
Okay. And then the storage fee of $75 seems pretty reasonable.
That's a little bit of too high, $75 for storing a car. That's really high.
Okay. Anybody on council have an issue with that?
This is the storing of the car at the place that the tow truck took it, it's not an actual parking spot or the parking garage.
Right, right.
Or storing your car on your own property.
It's an impound.
Just to be sure, we are clarifying what we're discussing.
Yeah. So, then the last one is the drop fee. This one's a little, I think this one's sticky, right? Like, so, say you're parked in a snow emergency route, and you get a knock on the door, and there's a police officer there saying, "Is that your car? It's time to move." And you go, "Oh, jeez, sorry," and you start getting your boots on, and by the time you get outside, there's a tow truck there. You say, "No, no, I'm moving it." Cool, here's $100.
Now, now, let me...
Is that not the scenario? Is that not the scenario?
That's the way it works. So the, the officers bend over backwards to find these folks before they have their car towed. So if they go up to their door, you know, they're going to see a car there, they're going to run the plate, they're going to go up and knock on the door.
Okay.
And say, "Hey, can you move your vehicle?" And they're going to try and try and try before they actually call a tow truck because it's no fun for us to wait for a tow truck either. I mean, we don't want every vehicle towed. It's, it's, it's a contentious situation to get your vehicle towed. So we do our darndest to make sure these vehicles get moved without getting towed. I think Robbie can attest to that. Sometimes we may wait a little longer than he likes to get them towed out of there. But we, we just do everything we can to make sure that they're moved before we call a tow truck.
Okay.
This is only after the tow truck's called and probably before it even gets to scene. If I read that right, it's got to get to the scene. If they move it first, we're going to call and cancel and we do it now. And to my knowledge, most of them don't charge if we cancel them while they're en route.
Okay.
This is just if they get to the scene. A lot of them too, where they're hooking up, that's why they, they refer to it as a drop. They've hooked up and then the person comes out. So then instead of towing the vehicle, they just unhook it then. So, but, you know, it, it has to meet the criteria that are on the, the ordinance for Section 2 there, or no, yeah. The, yeah, Section 2 of the 15, 610, 2.
Okay. Any strong feelings for or against the drop fee? Is everybody okay with the drop fee?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. I hear it sounds reasonable and I don't see any opposition. So we'll go with 175 for the non-crash, 325 plus 125 each additional hour for crash, $75 a day for storage, and then the $100 drop fee. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now...
So there are, so you want to go over the, the parking ones? We're not proposing fee changes, we're just cleaning up some language that was missed.
Okay.
And if I can just make a comment to Patty. The boot immobilization, we can, in the ordinance, it does say we can tow after 48 hours of the boot being on. Some people, as chief said, you know, they'll just leave it on for weeks if you let them, so we do have to tow it occasionally.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have had on multiple occasions that we call county to have a car towed and the, nobody will respond and that either, they just didn't respond at all to county. So they move on to the next one, whether that was because they didn't like our fees or they were busy or, I'm not sure why, but it has happened multiple times that the first company that was called was not available. As far as the parking fees, these were some things that just were missed. When the $18 a day, so 15, A2, when A1 was changed to $18 per day, the EV charging rate didn't get changed. So it's, it's just the daily rate for the EV charging.
Okay.
And then 15, A8, or, yeah, 15, A8 through 14, when the daily rate got changed on, like I said, on A1, those just didn't get updated on the one-day guest. They were still at the $12 per day. So those were just updating the $18 per day, listing each day out. And the...
Open-top container.
Yeah. The H1 and 2, this was, this actually has been saying daily rate of $50. I'm not sure when daily got put in there, but it was, in the ordinance, it does state weekly. So that was just correcting the language there from daily to weekly.
Okay, got it. Does anybody have any questions about any of these fees? There any? Okay. Great.
All right, we'll get that on your agenda for February.
Please do. All right. That is the end of our agenda. I do want to make two quick statements about initiatives the borough will be undertaking here to resolve open issues where we've decided we need to revisit input we've received from the public. So first, we will be forming a somewhat large working group that will be addressing some of the open issues on the signed ordinance revisions. That group starts meeting this week and will meet consistently as needed until our April workshop where we will discuss their proposed revisions. And then we'll also have a small working group begin working this week to come up with a new pilot program to deal with bus parking. So I just want folks to know those things are in works and we are working on them. At this point, we are ready for our second public comment session of the evening. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence.
I'd just like to make a suggestion of, on the funding issue that we seem to have. And maybe Patty or Judy or Harry can help me out on some of the history here. But I recall that past borough councils, when seeking funding, have gotten in a car and gone to Washington or up to Harrisburg as the elected officials themselves and requested to find out what funds were available. And the borough manager has suggested that perhaps we have not been successful with our seeking grants because we don't have lobbyists, which of course would be very expensive as they bill by the hour. But I think we were successful with the train station, it must have been 15 years ago, seeking money for the Majestic, Matt. And this is something that I would suggest, you don't have to form a legislative committee, it can be done informally and you might want to go back. And Judy, you remember those, when that was done. So that might be, I mean, they're there to represent us and as elected officials from the borough of Gettysburg, you deserve to be heard. And I would just directly call the staff and not have anyone in the middle in the communication. It, it, there's nothing to be lost by trying to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment, please?
I'll keep this brief. I'm Brian Hodges at 137 Ridge Avenue. Last year, at the end of the last Borough Council, I spoke about what the role of the workshops themselves would be and really wished there'd be a public dialogue going back and forth instead of just public comment, public comment. And a good example of that was last week's Planning Commission meeting that I attended where there was the initial public comments. Then throughout the meeting, people could raise their hands if they were respectful enough to ask questions as the meeting went along. And I just wish that we would be able to do that also. Second, on your upcoming stuff there is the Shade Tree Commission policy. I fell victim to that and I think Mr. Carr fell victim to that and I would like to see that resolved. Where 7:00 in the morning last summer, the borough was out there digging up a sidewalk in front of my building and we're like, "What are you doing here?" They're like, "We're putting a tree here." I'm like, "Okay." I was not given any advance notice. Guests of mine were sleeping. We're like, "What kind of tree is it going to be?" A 50-foot elm tree? I'm like, "Okay, it's going to block pretty much my entire bay window." A cherry tree was put at the end of the street and we asked if we could have that one instead. And they're like, "No, this one was designated for you." So I would just ask that the public, at least our business owner, is allowed to agree or disagree with a tree being put directly in front of them or a private property owner because that did not happen with me. So I don't think that should happen to anybody else. And third, real quick, we have a problem in the downtown area, especially with people not cleaning up after their dogs, to be honest with you, poop. I've seen fights, I've seen harassment, arguments where people just walk their dogs, let it go and then just walk away. And this Main Street plays a part in this because I saw a notice from Main Street Waynesboro that collaborated with the Borough Council in Waynesboro where they put some poop bag receptacles in strategic locations throughout the town to help alleviate that problem, give a little suggestion, pick after your dog. I think there's one at the rec park that I have used with, I have a golden retriever. I don't take him downtown at all. He, he doesn't mind himself. But I think that's a good suggestion to keep the town clean and stop fighting because I have seen fights with people and dogs and not picking up after them. That's it, thank you.
We, we have several of these, don't we?
We have four purchased, one on the square and one of the quadrants in the square.
Yeah.
And then three others out on the borough.
Sure.
Available with us.
Okay.
Where are the other three locations?
We are planning on South Washington Street at the end of Steinware and then towards the middle of Baltimore is the last location. I've, we've had the one out on the square for almost a year now and I've refilled it quite a few times and I think it has been successful. And there is one in that. It's hooked to the receptacle bin.
It's, yeah, it's over by the clock, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, okay.
We can run the story on this in the next newsletter. We did one last spring on this.
Great, great. Public comment. All right, seeing none? Anyone? All right, we are adjourned.